Alrighty, I want to say first of all, good evening to everyone. At this point, the study session will continue following the city council means. So at this point, I'd like to open up the Baldwin Park City Council Regular Meeting. Today is September, September, excuse me, I have the wrong one here. Okay, hold on, there's something going on here. Okay, hold on, let me have your agenda. Okay, here we go, alright. Today's October the 7th, 2015, and the time is 7:10. So, at this point, I wanted to ask Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco to lead us in invocation, followed by the flags. So I will ask all those that are able to stand to please do so.
Thank you, Mayor. Ask her to bow her heads, and Heavenly Father, please bless us and lead this council and the leadership of this community and our nation to make the right decisions, to help our communities, to help our, those that are in need. Bless our firefighters, our public safety police officers, those men and women that are today protecting our country, those that are in hardship in the state of Oregon where the shootings occurred. And please bless this city, amen.
Amen.
Thank you. At this point, we'll face the flag. Place your right hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Kim Diaz. Alright, real quick, I know that we also have mentioned, just want to, our deepest condolences over our deputy city clerk, Kristi Russell, whose sister-in-law was a victim in the Oregon shooting at the community college, and her name is Kim Diaz. So our deepest condolences goes out to her and her family. She's flown out this evening to be at the services, so our condolences goes to her family. This point, Vice Mayor, yes?
Mayor, I'd like to read something on behalf of city clerk Kristi. Kim Dietz was one of nine fatally shot at the college in Roseburg, Oregon. She is survived by Eric Dietz, who's Kristi's brother, and their daughter Shannon. She was an adult student at Umpqua Community College. She was an avid gardener, a dog lover, and was a caretaker at Pyrenees Vineyard where Eric, Kristi's brother, is a vineyard manager. Our deepest condolences goes out to the family and all the families who lost loved ones and went through that tragedy. We have to bring peace and not have this happen as frequently as it's been happening. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. Cruzbaca, at this point, council members wishing to close on anyone else they have? Okay, Sino, yes, yes, at this point.
If no one has any interest in closing, I would like to just invite everyone to the art exhibition that's happening next door, Dia de los Muertos. I believe it's going to go on until November the 2nd or 3rd, but if you look on our website, it'll give you the times and dates. It's, once again, right next door. It's a great exhibition, thank you.
Thank you.
One more thing I'd like to thank, I'd like to thank the E-Team for a fantastic barbecue. Everybody with their aprons, and I was trying to get some photos, and the food was fantastic, the ambiance, the camaraderie. Oh, what a wonderful, what a wonderful event, and lunch, you know, sit down and relax and have something really wonderful to eat. So thank you so very much to everyone and our wonderful staff.
I'd also like to invite everybody to the senior citizen Gray Gatsby dance this Friday. Hopefully you could all make that, and I'd really appreciate it. Thank you. Yes, go ahead. Can you speak into the mic, please?
I just want to close in memory of my niece, Suzette Ramos. She passed away a week ago in Mexico due to breast cancer. She was 39 years old. So just make sure this month is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Make sure that we all go do our checkup. Do as I say, not as I do, because I'm one of those that don't go. But anyway, just wanted to close in her memory, thank you.
Mayor, may I interject for a second? I'm sorry, I didn't think about it sooner, but I know that the business associations came together this weekend. In particular, I would like to thank Marietta from the Pizza Company who put together this program for breast cancer awareness, and it was called, you know, all the businesses came together and sponsored, and they raised a lot of money, and it goes to the Susan G. Komen Foundation, correct? And everyone participated. It was a great event, and they had, you know, a line of motorcycles come in, and it was such a beautiful event, and so many people participated in the community. But thank you to the businesses that came together to do that, it was very important, so thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. Anyone else? If not, at this point, I'm going to go ahead and go into the roll call. Oh yeah, real quick, legal counsel needs to go ahead and report out for a settlement.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to report out on a settlement and a lawsuit that the city of Baldwin Park is involved in. The city of Baldwin Park sued the city of Irwindale regarding a project in the city of Irwindale. The parties are the city of Baldwin Park, the city of Irwindale, and United Rock. The substance of the agreement is that there were mitigation measures that were granted to the city, including sound walls and other mitigation measures. In addition, the city of Irwindale will pay the city of Baldwin Park $738,000 as mitigation as well. The first payment will be made one year from the date of the execution of the agreement. The final payment will be made one year, two years after the execution of the agreement, and the vote on that settlement agreement was unanimous.
Alright, thank you very much, legal counsel. At this point, council members, if not.
I take roll call.
Yes, roll call, that's correct.
Good evening, everyone. Councilmember Monica Garcia.
Yeah.
Councilmembers, Susan Rube Hernandez.
Present.
Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco.
Here.
Mayor Potem Cruzbaca.
Present.
Mayor Manuel Ostano.
Present. Alright, thank you very much, appreciate that, and welcome back as well, our city treasurer, Maria Contreras. At this point, like, we're going into the presentations, the first one that we have, the Alt of Office for Incoming Commissioners, Sal Varentos of the Recreation and Community Services Commission, and Edwin Borkas of the Personnel Commission. So I asked both of you to come up here so we could, I could swear you in. So I'm going to ask at this point for both of you to raise your hand, I'm going to, I'm going to go ahead and read this all, and then at the end just say, "I do." Point, I, state your name.
I, Edwin Borkas.
I, Saul Varentos.
I solemnly swear that I will, that I will support and defend the Constitution of the California. How about that?
That's a great idea.
Me, okay. Thus I solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States, Constitution of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that it will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of California. I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservations or purpose of evasion, that I will well and faithfully discharge the duty on which I am about to enter. I do.
I do.
Thank you. Right, gentlemen? Yes. Got a blank pen. Got a blank pen.
It's only blue.
Is it black? No, it's blue.
I got a black one.
Black one, okay, let's go. Okay, so this one, go ahead and sign. Okay, so here we go. Alright, we're going to take our picture. Okay, the next presentation, the next presentation that we have is a plaque and recognition, appreciation of Sal and Rose Hernandez, the Baldwin Park High School Band Booster Club. So let's bring them up here.
I just wanted to say something while they're coming up here, and I've had the pleasure of attending their fundraisers and looking at what these two people do for our community as well as Veronica Lopez and her husband Robert, and everyone that worked so hard to be able to raise the money. It's, it's, it's really commendable. I look forward to their carne asada burritos and tacos, and the other day I went to their taco night and they sold out. Luckily, I got something to eat before that happened.
Awesome.
But it was just unbelievable, all the money that they do in order to raise money. Some of the money is raised to, for some of the uniform maintenance, the tailoring and the dry cleaning, foods and drinks and snacks for their travel. It's, I can go on and on, it's just unbelievable, and how tirelessly and the hours that they all put in to help our kids to stay in band. So thank you so very much, go Braves!
Thank you. Awesome, alright. Okay, Sal, come on up, you guys. Read a, the plaque that reads Sal and Rose Hernandez, Baldwin Park High School Band Booster Club, and recognition of your hard work, commitment, and unending dedication to the Baldwin Park High School band. Your time and effort to help makes this program a success and appreciated by the city councils. So on behalf of the city, I present you the plaque and the symbol of the city of Baldwin Park. Thank you. Oh, Mr. Polito, is he here?
Yes.
Yeah, come on up here. Definitely, go Braves!
Just thank you real quick for the recognition, but I also, I want to be able to thank also my board who's present here today, because without them, obviously, there's no way. Come on up, board, please. And, and it goes without saying also that it's no, it's no accident that Mr. Polito's here to help us, because he's always at all our functions, and, and always supports the band, and of course, administration alone. So thank you again, Mr. Polito. Alright, and it is, and it's not only just about us, but it is about the kids. It's about the kids and their enrichment in the arts, so thanks again, you guys, I appreciate it.
game at Baldwin Park High School. We want everybody to attend, please don't forget.
Oh yeah, the big SVBP.
That rivalry has always existed. The famous bell when I was in high school, who would win the bell?
No.
Go dance, there you go.
Alrighty, the next, the next presentation by Cookie Partuski, Los Angeles County Registrar as a Recorder, county clerk, including a PowerPoint entitled "The Impact of Your Vote", general election November 3rd. Thank you. Is a person here?
Yeah, it was actually Angie, Mr. Candy.
Oh, okay, alright, thank you, okay, that's fine.
Ollie Karina. Okay.
So, yeah, get that mic, yes.
Okay. Can anyone hear me now? Okay. Alright, so the reason why we're here, my name is Angie Mr. Candy from Los Angeles County Register Recorder's Office. As you know, your city has an election, an election on November 3rd, so we're here to just give you a little bit of a why your vote matters and how it impacts you. So I'm just going to do a brief presentation, which is called "Impact of Your Vote," and every vote counts and every election matters. Okay, so, why do we vote? Every vote matters. The reason, you want to ask yourself, what's going on in your community, and why, what motivates you to vote? There are some reasons that you see on the, on the PowerPoint that will affect our daily day basis. This chart actually gives you a great rundown of your local, state, and federal. A lot of people vote on your, on the federal elections, but not on the local, and the turnout is always low. But the local one is really important, because that's the one that affects on your daily, day-to-day life. For instance, for your schools, or there's something going on in your community that you don't like, you have, for instance, trash, or the potholes, or whatever the case is, local elections are, are, I think, the most important one that will affect our day-to-day lives, education. So just, just remember that every vote counts and every election matters, not just the federal election. This is a really nice graph that describes who's voting. So as you all know, population of Los Angeles County is over 10 million. Going down, eligible voters are a little over 6 million, and then the registered are less than 5 million. And that little chart, little corner is the, our average of 20, from 2012 to 2014 primary and general election, which the turnout was, on average, 25%, which is really low. So, for instance, if we give an example of this room, say about 50 of you, maybe 10, 15 of the people will be making the decision for the rest, rest of you. So how do you feel about that? You want to have a say in the election and make your voice heard. And this chart gives a good example. And a lot of people say that my vote doesn't matter, it doesn't count. But actually, it does. For the recent election in 2015, Julie Costanzo, there was a tie, and they did a recount in San Gabriel City Council ballot. She won by two counts. If they didn't, you know, two, two counts, that's, that's major, and she won. So your vote does matter, and your vote counts, 100%. The first step is you have to register to vote. And where, how could you register? And what's the prerequisite? You obviously have to be 18 years old, and you have to be a United States citizen. So if you are, if you fall into those categories, then you're one step ahead. How can you register? You can go online on lavote.net. There's paper application available in most government buildings, libraries, you can come to the registrar's office, schools, post office, they're available everywhere. You have to re-register if you change your name, if you change your address or political party. We also brought application, registration forms, if anyone here is not registered and would like to register, gladly we'll sign you up today, and we'll, we'll register you. And if you've changed your name, or political party, or address change, you've had a, you've moved recently, you can also re-register, and we'll be glad to assist you with that. And to be eligible to vote, you must have registered 15 days prior to the election. So for instance, this election, it's going to be on November 3rd, so 15 calendar days, it's going to be on October 29th. So doesn't mean that if you pass the deadline that you can't register, you can obviously register, but you just won't be able to vote on November 3rd. But you can certainly vote on the next election. Step two is for you to actually get out and vote on Election Day. There is different ways of voting, so it's not just going to the polling place. You can vote by mail, so if you're a permanent vote by mail, you get your ballot in the mail, and you can mail it in. If you forget, or you miss the deadline, then you can drop it off and, at your polling location. And if you change your mind, and you don't want to vote by mail, you can certainly bring your vote by mail ballot to your polling location, surrender it. The clerk will give you a regular ballot, and you can vote, and they'll give you a regular ballot, and you can vote. Another way is early voting that a lot of people don't know. You could, or, prior to the election, two weeks prior to the election, our office, the Norwalk office, which is 12400 Imperial Highway, we are open even on weekends from 8:00 to 4:00, Monday through Friday, 8:00 to 5:00, and Saturday, Sunday, 8:00 to 4:00, so you can come to our offices two weeks prior to the election, so two weeks prior to November 3rd, and you can cast your vote, if you know you are not going to be available on, on November 3rd. And of course, the last is to go to your polling location. And how can you find your polling location? It's on your sample ballot, and if you don't have your sample ballot and you've lost it, you can go online at lavote.net, and it's very easy to find, all you have to do is just enter your address, and it's right there. Step three is to get in, stay engaged. It's not just to register and to vote, but you want to, you want to be involved. There's ways that you could do it. You can contact a local representative. You can attend a council or a school board meeting, as you all here today. You can volunteer and, and register and be, register people. We also hold voter registration trainings, that you can certainly contact our offices. We'll come out, we'll train you, and you can, or you can come to our offices, and you'll be able to go out in your community and register people. You can serve as a poll worker on Election Day, and I highly recommend it for students and, and if, recently, high school graduates or college students. And also, through social media, share, we, our registrar's office, we have Twitter, Facebook, and Instagram, and we use the hashtag #LAVotes. So if you're using and if you're posting something, make sure you hashtag #LAVotes, because, you know, friends share, family members share, you can tag our offices, and so that way we keep, we keep the word going, and everyone knows. And if you go on our page, on, on our Facebook page, you'll see all updates, not just about election, but specifically election stuff, use, all, all updates are there. So basically, this concludes the, the short presentation. So if you want to get more information, there's a lot of resources that you guys can look up to, for instance, Rock to Vote, but main, you can go on lavote.net, all election, if you don't know if you're registered, you can check there. If you want to find your polling location, you can certainly go ahead and do it now, you don't have to wait until you get your sample ballot, or wait till the last minute on, on Election Day. Any kind of information you want to know, who's running, the measures, all, anything that you want, it's on our website, it's very, it's very resourceful, so I'd highly recommend for anyone to go and check it out. And the key dates that we have, this is a, so your official sample ballots are going to be mailed out, well, they start at September 24th through October 13th, so you should be getting it, if you haven't received it yet, you will be getting it soon. From October 5th to November 3rd, like I said, is the early voting, so you can come to our Norwalk office and cast your ballot, including weekends, which is pretty amazing, on Saturday and Sunday. October 19th is the registration, it's the day of the registration closes for the November 3rd election. Just, just to make a note again, that doesn't mean you can't register after, you certainly can register after, but you just won't be able to vote on November 3rd election. October 17th is the last day to apply for vote by mail, so you can get your sample ballot, and if you want to be a vote by mail for November 3rd election, there's a little piece of paper on the back of your sample ballot, so what you do is you, you know, you say that I want to be a vote by mail, you mail that in, and then we'll send you a vote by mail ballot. If you know you're going to be out of town, or you're going to be so busy that you're not going to be able to go to polls, you know that you can, you can still vote. And of course, November 3rd, Election Day, polls are open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. If you walk in at 7:59 PM, no one's going to deny you, so you can still cast your vote. And that basically concludes. Again, I want to encourage anyone here that is maybe not registered or wants to register, or if you've had any of the changes, such as you want to change your political party, if you've had an address change or name change, please come see me, I'm going to be in the back of the room, and I'll give you voter registration cards. Any questions? Also, I, I can give out a sign-in sheet, if anyone is interested to have this slide, I can certainly email you, just raise your hand, I'll, I'll give you the sign-in sheet so, so I can get your information and I can mail it out to you, or email it to you, I'm sorry. That's it, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, can I share just really quickly?
Yes, that's fine.
And I know she did share one example, and we think it's very rare, but even in the city of Rosemead, they have 54,000 residents, and a council member lost by one vote. I believe Sandra Menta got in with one vote. 54,000 in her own city, someone won at the school board with five votes. So literally, a household could determine the way the election goes, it's really important that everyone do vote, every vote counts, thank you.
Alright, thank you very much. At this point, I'd like to open up the public communication, anyone wishing to speak, approximately two minutes, thank you. Hey, good evening.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Carmen Caldon, and I'm here representing the Church of the Redeemer. We want to inform you of two events that we will be hosting. The first is a resume boot camp on October 13th from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM. And the second is a job college and veterans fair on October 20th from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. By attending the resume boot camp, job seekers will receive, bear with me, will receive help in putting together their resume. In addition, job seekers will receive a fast track, so they don't have to wait in line on October 20th. At the job fair, a wide range of industries and jobs are expected to be at the event, recruiting, interviewing, to fill positions in accounting, in administration, in clerical, in customer service, in education, financial services, and in healthcare, also in manufacturing and nonprofit sales, transportation, and more. Along with the organization... Along with the organization that are hiring, the job fair will also feature various employment in resources in higher education also. We are, we are asking the city's permission, or asking if you would please allow us to advertise on your marquee in Morgan Park. And we are also asking if you allow us to post our yard signs two weeks before the event, so that would be like on Saturday, if we have your permission. And we also have flyers to pass out, if you would allow us to leave them, so that you could pass them out. And we also have that, have our flyer available digitally, so that I could send it to you and you could send that out also. I do thank you for your time and your, your great help in allowing us to have the most awesome job fair that the Church of the Redeemer and the city of Baldwin Park has ever had. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank both of you. Thank you very much. Thanks, Roman.
Hello, Baldwin Park City Council. Under the Constitution of the United States of America, we citizens of Baldwin Park have the right to know, please listen carefully, how you spend our taxpayers' money. You, 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 and you as a lawyer should know better. You took $10,000, you threw it away, you figured, we're going to give them more money to spend. We're going to give them $120,000. Anyhow, Mr. Luna and all his constituents in Baldwin Park, they don't mind paying. It's free, you know, we can give it away. Mr. Pacheco, you're the leader. You people should resign immediately, because you don't run our city, you give our money away. Gee, many crickets, how many times do we have to tell you people? The lawyer's looking at me like saying, we don't need etiquette, we can do anything we want. You people are ridiculous. You have these taxpayers out here, including some of you. My God, you don't deserve to be called council people. You deserve to be called rejects, because that's exactly what you're doing with my taxpayers' money and all of their taxpayers' money. You're throwing it out the window without, no due process. You don't even know what etiquette is. You stand there looking at me, all of you, saying, he doesn't know what etiquette is. You people up there should stand up, applaud, and tell yourself you're a bunch of rejects. And you, the people that are not rejects, I apologize, but for you that are, you're total rejects. Excuse the expression. We citizens of Baldwin Park understand that you people should spend our taxpayers' money wisely. You are not spending it wisely when you don't have to report all of this money that's being spent to back to the city council. I guess that must make you people feel real proud, huh? Look, we can spend $120,000 and nobody has to worry about it. I hope you give me good stares, because boy, I'll tell you, this will never be the end. I'm going to be here every time, every Tuesday, Wednesday, whenever you have a meeting, and I'm going to reply to this. You people are disgrace to the city of Baldwin Park. Look, you're in the paper. Only one of you had the gall enough to stand up and say no. The rest of you went with the flow. What a reject. Attorney, city lawyer, I'll, I need your card when I get done.
Mr. Luna, you have three minutes.
Oh, there goes your three minutes. Thank you very much. Okay, moving along with public communication.
You people ought to resign.
I'm Mr. Carey. Yeah, like he says, you spend the taxpayers' money, $10,000, an open ticket wasn't enough, you wanted to raise it to 120. Maybe Ricardo over there can figure out where these poor taxpayers in this city are going to get the money to replace this. $10,000 is plenty for a consulting thing, raising it to $120,000, so you can get more campaign contributions or things of this type, you know, like from Rome Housing and Montebello Development. It's an act of desperation. It's time for a change, and they need to remove some of the incumbents, people have been in office a long time, and get fresh faces and fresh ideas, and stop some of the wasteful nonsense. It just goes on and on. You're wasting money here. Their money. I don't live here, so it's not my money. San Bernardino's doing that to me over there. But you're doing it here. You've been in office all these years and you're throwing the money away. Their money, their taxpayer money. So, you can stay in office and get your campaign contributions. Of course, you have the form you fill out, but I'm wondering about the money that flows in under the table, under the radar, that nobody knows about. We know it goes on, but we can't find out how much that money actually is. It just goes on and on. And now, you want to attack the officers, the people you just put in those commissions, because they don't yield to you. You want to run them out of there. You just barely swore them in, what, a month ago? And because you want to use your power like a bully, because that's what it is, and push them out and put in who will yield to your will, that's a bully. And bullies need to be removed from office. There's no place, no room for that, using your position to hurt others, so you can stay in office longer. You've been here long enough, Ricardo, it's time to, you and Monica, to move on and get some fresh faces in here to take the city in the correct direction. You started with the logo, at least it's on the city council, on this flyer now, with the city logo. That's what you should use for your 60th anniversary. You shouldn't be all this other type of, oh, you need a different logo. You've got a logo, it's right there. As for the medians, leave the damn grass there. Don't pull it up and spend money in that. Cap the sprinklers, that's what they did in San Bernardino, and they put the little tricklers over by the trees. No need to pull the grass up and have an architect figure out what kind of plants to put there. The grass will be green when it rains again. You need to think about how to save money, not how to waste more of it.
To Carey, you have three minutes.
And you're sure good at that. Leave the damn grass there.
Okay, appreciate that. Thank you.
I'm Ken Woods. I'm a very concerned citizen. On several occasions, council members had said, we should do what this city does, or we should do what that city does. Well, after four of you voted last month, I guess we're going to be doing what South Almani does. Have you seen the article in the Tribune about South Almani? Like the four of you, they decided to give financial control to their city manager and department heads to hire consultants. So, their city manager and department heads gave hundreds of thousands of dollars to one consultant without using the bid system. Boy, that sounds more and more like Baldwin Park. I want Baldwin Park residents, and I assume you're all residents, who are elected to this city council to control the purse strings of our city and not its employees. And to raise that limit without your control from $10,000 to $120,000 was done with reckless abandonment. All four of you. You know, when I vote, I vote with my conscience. You ought to try it sometime.
All right, thank you very much. Moving along with public communication.
My name is Phil Correa.
Hey, Phil.
This weekend, I'm doing, I'm presenting a short film festival for the community. I worked on this project for about maybe six months, and it's become a nationwide project. And when I get another video, a short film, it'll be a worldwide. Waiting for one from India. But I want, I've been doing this for a while. It gave, it gave me a lot of opportunity to meet people from, from different communities. And I really want to do something for Baldwin Park. Give them acknowledgement, give Baldwin Park some inspiration in the arts. It's very important to me to do this. It's going to, it's going to happen this Saturday, but it won't work if, if, if the people of Baldwin Park do not attend. I want to do this annually, and I want to do it where, where Baldwin Park gets a lot of attention, a way of creating revenue for Baldwin Park as well. It's very important. Everybody is, everybody's doing it except us. We seem like we're followers in, in some cases, but you know, we, we have a bunch of leaders here. And, and it's just a chance to, to do an event every year and, and bring, bring the nation to the city, get them involved. Now, the program is going to provide a cutting-edge opportunity. I'm going to introduce Periscope and a chance for people that are not here, that are in another state, Orlando, Philadelphia, who have their videos, and they're able to introduce their videos using a projector and, and showing it on, on screen. So, it's going to bring a new dimension to Baldwin Park in the sense that we're going to be, you know, we're, we're going to take center stage for that, that time and moment. The event's going to be at the Performance Arts Center, October 10th. This is on Saturday. It's going to be from, the doors are going to open from 11:00 to 4:00, and the showing of the short films, there'll be twenty, 25 short films. And this is, this is from Baldwin Park, people that you, we have here that nobody knows about, very talented group. And so, it's there for us to enjoy, you know.
Mr. Correa, you have three minutes.
Okay. I'm just going to pass these out later on, is that all right?
Yeah, that's fine. Give them to the city clerk.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Okay, moving along with public communication. Thank you very much.
One of the things that Luna and Mr. Woods mentioned, you know, which is true, all you guys want as commissioners are puppets, okay? If that puppet goes out of line, you want to get rid of them, okay? Thank you, Pacheco, Mr. Lozano, Mrs. Garcia, for kicking me out, okay? Now, I can go full blast against you guys. I already started since the article came out in the paper. I've been giving it out in my neighborhood, in front of the church, you know, so they can know exactly how this council is running. You know, that high five that Mr. Lozano gave, that developer and everything, went out to dinner with him. You've got to be careful, Mr. Lozano, there's people seeing what's happening. Mr. Pacheco, the same thing. Mrs. Garcia, the same thing. The people are tired. The word out there, I wouldn't even run for office this time. You guys are out. Everybody, not only in my neighborhood, the following neighborhoods and everything, what do you think? The churches, they, they don't want, you know, go ahead, Mr., go ahead, go ahead, smile. We'll be smiling on the 3rd, okay? Whatever it takes, we're going to do it. Citizens, the voice of the citizens, coming out, okay? It's time for a new change, new faces. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Lozano and Council. I would like to personally thank you once again for the plaque and the award that we received today. Thank you very much. I would also like to personally invite all of the council and you, Mr. Mayor Lozano, to attend our annual Baldwin Park High School Band Tournament that will be on Saturday, October 17th, at the Baldwin Park High School Stadium. This year, we have over 30 bands from the surrounding communities that will be participating and competing at our band tournament. Also, we are having the world-famous Pasadena City College Tournament of Roses Honorary Band performing a showcase at the end of our tournament. It's something very special for all the students that will be there in attendance, and I really hope you guys can make it. Just, if you need any information, you can visit our website at bphsbravestband.com. And let's not forget this Friday's football game against Sierra Vista, where both bands will be performing on the field. And Sierra Vista will also be having their field tournament on October 31st. So, we hope to see you guys all there.
Thank you. So, the actual, the band tournament is October, what did you say?
October 17th, Saturday.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. I bear pardon? It begins at noon, but it lasts until 10:00 in the, in 10:00 in the evening. Pasadena City College will be performing at 9:00 p.m.
Hey, that's my alma mater.
There you go, yeah. It'll be very, it'll be something very nice and very memorable for the students. All right? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Looking forward to seeing you there. Thank you. All right, moving along with public communication.
Greg Tuttle, business owner. I had, I read one of your flyers, Mayor, said that you did $21 million worth of development for the city. You failed to mention that you put the city $64 million in the hole. I think you need to do both sides, so they know how much it cost us. As far as the Sid Masavi deal and your high-fiving and going to dinner and that stuff, you guys are sick. You guys want to put the city in the hole. People try to keep the city out of debt, you guys put it in the hole. You guys don't want to sign the thing that you're going to adhere to the city manager controlling things. You want to control it, but then you release control. And you tell them, hey, let them go ahead, no competitive bidding, no fair bidding, go ahead. It's all campaign money. This is the time of the year for campaigning. And we all know that Sid Masavi is Pacheco's buddy. Now then, we go into the SEIU, they made a great decision last night, and I'll tell you what, the calling's there. Monica and Pacheco, find a new job. Now then, Pacheco, keep trying to bring in your buddies, Montebello. You can sit back, relax, I got all the time here. Montebello Housing, you keep trying to get those guys in, don't you? They screwed up in their six months, couldn't get anything in, but you're going to bring them back, they get another $1,500. But spell their name right on your 460 form, okay? Not Housing Montebello, okay? Get that right the next time you spell it. Then we want to bring in Rome. You guys are all bringing in Rome. You're getting another developer to give you some more money. Your eyebrows are twitching, okay? Let's think of the citizens. Let's let them finish this project first and see how it turns out. I'm really scared, because you know what? They want to put more housing in here and more people. That means you're going to take up this transit thing. You want to build a beautiful park over here, where are you going to park the people? Where are you going to park your residents here that are people that are going to live in these housing up here and you think you're going to have one and a half car per family? It ain't going to happen. And you people know it. But you're going to do something that's going to screw this city up. But thank God, you only got a few more weeks left, and we'll be able to change that around. Then, we go into Pacheco's buddies that he brought in. Is your cheeks getting sore? You brought in your buddies. You brought in your buddies to associate with the businesses, we went to that meeting. Three of the clueless people like you I've ever seen. I can't believe that these guys are getting paid money for consultants. They have no clue on how to associate businesses with the community, with the city. All they've done is some transit stuff and off, off-the-wall stuff, they've never connected businesses with the city. We paid hundreds of thousands of dollars for consultants like these guys, but these are the dumbest I've met so far. But thanks to you and your buddy deals, we're gonna pay them about probably 30,000 bucks when it's done, and we'll get nothing more than what we've had before, nothing.
Mr. Tuttle.
All right, okay, thank you very much, appreciate that. All right, anyone else moving along with public communication? Okay, if not, I'm gonna go ahead and declare the public communication closed. We're gonna go into consent calendar, so we have items, uh, one through, let me just see here. Okay, one moment, using the computer, one through 15, council members wishing to pull any item?
Mayor, let me go ahead and pull number 11.
Number 11? Okay, number 11. Any other council members?
I would like to pull number nine, so that we can bring it back at the next council meeting, please.
Sure, alrighty.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, if not, at this point, I'd like to move for consent calendars with the exception of items nine and 11. That's my motion?
Second.
Second, any objections?
Um, mayor?
Yes, item number 11?
I, yes.
Approve of the gateway.
We're just gonna pull number, what was it, nine and 11, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, that's.
So you just wanna pull them for the following meeting, is that what you're doing?
No, let's, I think we wanna pull them and we wanna discuss them.
Yes, exactly. All right, so that was my motion, I think you went ahead of me. Okay, so item number nine, Vice Mayor, the approve, the approve of the proposed exclusive negotiation agreement, E&amp;A, with Rome Development Corporation for a proposed Phase II, two transit-oriented mixed-use development between the Mona Boulevard and the Baldwin Park Civic Center. Yes, yes.
Well, go ahead, I think she wanted to pull it to.
Yes, I wanna, I wanna continue it if you please, to the next council meeting.
I'll second that.
No discussion, just to the next, I believe that's October the 21st.
Okay, well, one, I'll object, so at this point, Madam City Clerk, roll call, please.
Mayor Patel, Chris Baca.
One, one moment, please, I think there's a discussion here, is that what's going on?
Okay, all right, so at this point, I'm, I'm, there is a, there is a, excuse me, a motion to table this, there was a second, and I'm objecting, so at this point, I'm asking Madam City Clerk for a roll call.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, the, the.
Mayor Patel, Chris Baca.
I would like to continue it to October the 21st or the next council meeting.
All right, go ahead.
Aren't you voting? Okay.
Yes, so she's about to move it over.
Councilmember Susan Rubio?
Yes.
Councilmember Monica Garcia?
No.
Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco?
No.
Mayor, Mayor Manuel Lozano?
No, okay, the motion fails, so it remains on the actual agenda at this point, so that's item number nine, so we'll go ahead and move. So at this point, I'm gonna go ahead and move to approve item number nine.
Oh, um, second that.
Okay, second, any objections?
Yes.
Okay, one objection, Madam City Clerk, roll call, please. No, that was to move it to table it, this is to actually approve it. All right, so there's.
Mayor Manuel Lozano?
Uh, yes, to move.
Councilmember Monica Garcia?
Yes, to approve.
Councilmember Susan Rubio?
Yes.
Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco?
Yes.
Mayor Patel, Chris Baca?
No.
Okay, so it's been approved, the motion is for one. All right, so at this point, we'll go over to item number 11, which is the approve of the Gateway Monument Maintenance Agreement with Caltrans, and I believe that's Councilmember Monica Garcia, yes.
Thank you. Yes, I just wanted to say that I'm in favor of moving the agreement forward, but I would like us to look at the design of this monument, and can you tell me when we'll, we'll have the opportunity to do that?
We resent the designs via email.
Um, yes, we have to move very quickly on that, we could probably bring it back to you at the next meeting and still make our deadlines. We've been sending out by email sort of the concept designs, so we'll need to stick very close to that, we might be able to make small deviations on the colors or the textures and that type of thing.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I'm not too thrilled, yeah, I'm not too thrilled about it, I mean, if it's gonna hold it up entirely, I mean, I don't wanna do that, but I also wasn't too thrilled with the designs. I mean, it, like, for example, on that one that you're looking at, you know, it's, I'm not sure what that is.
Um, it does look better in color, and we can bring it back at the next meeting and get the council's input and see if there's some minor changes that we can make.
Minor as what, as in what?
Um, you know, the structure's been designed, we can probably work with the, the rock, the textures, the colors, a little bit of the way that the name and the sign is on the top.
Hmm, yeah, I'm not really sure what the inspiration was for this, what is it, I mean?
Uh, staff looked at other monuments in other cities around, mostly Orange County, 'cause that's where most of them are, and we sort of developed based on the cost that Caltrans was allocating to the project and sort of based it on some of those other monuments.
Mm-hmm. Like I said, I don't wanna hold it up, what is the deadline for this?
You can approve the maintenance agreement tonight, and we can bring this back to you at the next meeting. They wanted to have a final design somewhere around mid-November.
Mid-November.
Earlier mid-November.
Okay, yeah, if we, if we can move the agreement forward and then bring the design back at the next council meeting or something.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right.
Um, one comment, I, since it's been pulled, I want to thank staff and Councilmember Roger Hernandez and his staff, because this was very important, I had mentioned that I would really like to see something of a monument or an announcement, like other cities that you are entering Baldwin Park, and thank you so very much for, for doing that and putting that together, thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much, a good point. So at this point, let me go over to the public hearing, we have item 16, which is.
Mayor, can I make the motion to move the agreement forward and bring the design back?
Absolutely.
And then, is there a second or?
Second.
Second, any objections, seen none, so move.
Thank you.
All right, okay, the public hearing, which is item 16, conduct a public hearing to consider an extension of existing citywide moratorium on the new, an expansion of the existing massage establishment. So I believe the Honorable and the distinguished, you're gonna be handling this right, Amy Harbin, thank you very much.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, members of the audience. What this request is, is this is an extension of the existing, um, moratorium. What approval of this extension would do is that it would extend the moratorium for a total of 22 months and 15 days. As the council is aware, over the past years, there's been a lot of back and forth between who regulates what on massage establishments. However, earlier this year, Assembly Bill 1147 was adopted, which really set out who delineated what, and it gave cities back their land use authority. So unfortunately, because the city doesn't have any development standards or anything in effect, what we wanna do is, in order to stop any new or new establishments or expansions of existing, is place a moratorium on those, so that we can go in in the next several months, do a detailed review of concentration of these issues, look at new development standards, require possibly a CUP, and then amend the code to what we feel the city deserves. So at this time, staff is recommending that the city council adopt attachment number two to the staff report entitled, "A Report of Measures That Are Taken to Alleviate Conditions That Led to the Adoption of Ordinance 1378," and two, Ordinance 1381, entitled, "An Interim Ordinance of the City of Baldwin Park Extending a Citywide Moratorium on the Establishment of New and Expansion of Existing Massage Businesses," and this concludes staff's presentation.
All right, thank you very much. At this point, I will go ahead and open up the public hearing, so anyone wishing to speak in favor of this particular subject, which is the addressing the expansion of existing massage establishment. So you're, you're, this is, you're in support?
I'm extending the thing so that they can't, um, open anymore, expand the ones they already have.
Okay, then, when I, when I call those that wanna speak against opposing, then you come up. So anyone wishing to speak in support?
Oh, is it?
Okay, so at this point, see no interest, I know, but anyone that's opposing, go ahead.
Go 50/50 with that, I never know which way, you know?
Alrighty.
One of those things, you know? Yeah, they shouldn't, uh, they shouldn't even be allowed anyway, 'cause we know what happens at places like that. Um, so, yeah, they, it's fine to fix it so that they can't expand or open anymore of these places, you know, what goes on in places like that, you hear about it once in a while, where they find prostitution and things like that going on in massage parlors. So, yeah, you get a massage all right. Uh, oh Ricardo, you're sure drinking a lot of liquid tonight, you must be really nervous over there.
Okay, let's, let's get back to the subject, please.
Well, I just noticed that, nobody else.
Okay, all right.
That's just what the judge says on TV, if a person's nervous, they drink a lot.
Let's address the subject, are you finished?
Okay, um, yeah, but like I say, no more, uh, massage parlors or anything like that, and don't expand any that are already here. Maybe in the future, they can do stings and get rid of them that way. Not just here in Baldwin Park, but in surrounding cities as well. They tend to, uh, go to places where they think they can get away with things. Uh, okay, I know there's other things going on out there too, that they're finding here and there, so.
All right.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, at this point, anyone else wishing to speak, opposing? Okay, since I note for the interest, I now declare the public hearing closed, so at this point, um, I'm gonna go ahead for the motion attached, number entitled, "Reports of Measures Taken to Alleviate the Conditions That Led to the Adoption of Ordinance 1378," uh, and Ordinance Number 1381, entitled, "An Interim Urgency Ordinance of the City of Baldwin Park Extending a Moratorium on Establishment of New Expansion and Existing Massage Establishments Within the City of Baldwin Park," and declaring the urgency thereof. That is my motion.
Second.
Second, any objections, seen none, so move. All right, at this point, we'll go over to reports of officers, we have the direction, first item, direction and approval of the 60th Anniversary Logo, Mark, I think I'm off.
You're off.
Okay, we're off, we're back on, so who's, Manny? Okay.
Yes, sir, mayor.
Go ahead.
Uh, today, you have before you, let's see, the 60th Anniversary Logo, I received direction from the city council to make some modifications, so I believe that Councilmember Rubio indicated that she would like to see Baldwin Park a little bit more distinct in this one, uh, with council consensus, so that is one option, so that would be option A. Option B, we, council also directed staff to incorporate the year, so the year is inserted under the six zero, 1956 to 2016, so that is another option, and I believe, uh, I was also asked to bring a blend of both of them, and the version that the designer came up with is this for the blend of both of them, which is a hybrid. Uh, so those are the three options, so once again, option A, option B.
Manny, Manny, go back to the one that we had originally agreed upon.
Oh, it was 50/50, because some said A, and some, I think, I believe Councilmember Garcia and I said B.
Oh, B, okay.
And I believe you and, and Councilmember Rubio said A.
Oh.
And they did the blend.
Oh, okay, so we're.
Or was it the other way around?
No, that's, she's right, but I'm liking the blend, and so I'm liking B, no, the B was the one that they liked, but we needed, we wanted the 60th anniversary, which was missing from the first.
A and C.
Yeah, the hybrid looks, it looks like a postage stamp to me, like when they're celebrating somebody, you know? And I, I like the hybrid.
You know what, that to me looks like a pair of glasses, missing the other little handle over there. You have to look at it from this side. So, let's, yeah, I don't know about that one.
B and A, A?
That's nice.
And C, like, see A again?
That one's nice, I like that. That's, that's much more, says it all.
It'll, but it'll get lost, if you look at it like shirts and hats or whatever they're going to be doing as part of the marketing, what I see with the white background is that it'll get lost.
Okay, which is the one that you're suggesting?
Well, I like the hybrid, either B or the hybrid. Uh, B because of the shape of it, it's more square, so I'm, I, I look at it, if we're going to have like on shirts, or it's gonna be big, or hats, or.
Well, can we make the, the 60 look like this on that other, on the one that, that one? That looks like a pair of glasses, missing one, one side, but if you look at it, but, like that, say like that 60, like that?
On the other one, B?
Yes, yes.
I would agree with that one, what you're saying. You're saying you want the 60 to be more colorful and to look like a 60, I would agree with that.
Okay, so we're looking at the option B with modifying the 60.
Yes.
Yes.
And see where the colors are, that should be blue then.
Okay, then we will go, we will go back one more time, and we will bring it back.
Better hurry before the anniversary's over.
Yeah, so what are we doing with the 60 then? I mean, let's even it out, right?
The way you want it.
Okay, all right.
So you're evening it out, and the concept the designer was thinking of, it was festive, and it was going up, and so that's why the 60 is going at an angle.
Six, fifty-nine, I'm almost there.
Okay, so we will modify option B and modify the 60 a little bit, right?
Yeah, make the zero bigger so that's even, looks more like a 60.
Very good.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so at this point, we'll go over to item 18, which is the review of the current application, let's move this over to next, the next meeting. And maintain, I'll, that's my motion to move it over.
Second.
And, and any objections, seen none, so move. Item 19, which is a request by the Montebello Housing Development Corporation for an extension of the time to the current exclusive negotiation agreement.
May I tell us that we moved that down to another council meeting?
Yeah, I'll second.
Thank you.
Any objections, seen none, so move. All right, um, the next one's a request by Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco for discussion and direction to the staff on the following council member. Pacheco's requesting that direction be provided to bring back a report on Resolution 2016 Zero to Six Regarding Pay Scales and Staths for Part-Time Positions. Councilmember?
Yes, mayor, we'd like staff to put together a report and bring back the, um, the impact of the recent, uh, I know that the, the state gave a recent, um, minimum wage increase, so I know what, what the impacts are, uh, to our current staff, staffing, 'cause I know that since the increase went up, we have to look at the compaction issues, and so if staff could take a look at that and bring us back a report.
All right, sounds good. You wanna go ahead and go for the next one, the bus shelter?
Also, I'm asking, uh, that, uh, they're, I'm providing to, for staff to bring back a report to replace or upgrade the city bus shelters, and replace the bus shelter trash containers using transportation funds, so I know that we're trying to be more of a walkable community and have more people use the buses, but also, you know, we don't have any shades out there, and a lot of residents complain to me that we're asking to, you know, to be on foot more, but yet they're not, there's no shading out there, so if we could take a look at how to, how to provide better shading, uh, I know that, um, in West Coast, they have this, this sort of a bus shelter that uses a mesh around it, where it provides, uh, nice shading when you're out there, when it's very sunny, and also to look for, uh, different ways to, uh, look at costs, make them more affordable. I know these bus shelters could run, you know, fifteen, twenty thousand, which I think is a lot of money, but, uh, let's look at any alternatives we can have to be able to make, make them more affordable and make our dollars go longer for the bus shelters. And also, if we could upgrade our trash cans, they look really horrible, this is, this ugly-looking black trash cans, they have something that's a little bit more, uh, you know, like a designer-type trash can or something that goes better with our downtown, right? Thank you.
Um, could I sort of elaborate on that, please? Um, as far as, um, the bus shelters, that's something that, um, I have been working on with a grant through Foothill Transit, because I sit on their commission, and I have mentioned it to, uh, our Public Works Director, uh, to look into that. I believe that with the Berkshire Group, there, you're also looking at putting in smartboards so that the people know when the buses are coming, and they don't have to guess, um, along with replacing some of our transit buses as well. I had a meeting with Waste Management today, and from what I understand, maybe we could work something out with them, because they do pick up the trash from our trash containers that are all over the city, along the streets. So maybe there's something that we could do with Waste Management, so that we can sort of refurbish them, either, like a lot of cities have, those, um, they almost look like rock or like cement or something that are permanently there. I think it would be really nice for us to try to see if we can do that with them, since they're picking up the trash already. Thank you.
Councilmember Baca, what I would add is, ask the city to combine the transportation funds with those funds that you're aware of, and come back with some kind of a plan that shows the different bus shelters. I know there was a couple of years ago that the staff put together a schedule of all the bus shelters, and which sites didn't have one and which did, and to kind of get a, a sort of a, a cost, you know, maybe we could phase them in, 'cause there's a lot of bus shelters that, that are needed throughout the city, and if we could phase in the areas that are most in need of a bus shelter, like the ones along the, or the most used bus stops, and kind of come up with a plan that we could start to either upgrade or replace bus shelters, or put them where they don't have any, and just to kind of encourage people that way, but appreciate that, you have a source, I know you sit on the Foothill Board, but if we could connect staff with, with the Foothill Board and kind of come up with a, over. staff with, with the Foothill Board and kind of come up with a, over a comprehensive plan on how to change out our, our bus shelters, and if you could do it within, before the year's end, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, um, but first of all, you know, I would, and I know that I've spoken to, uh, Mr. Wall about this, is to try to exhaust the grants that are available to us through either Foothill Transit or the transportation grants, uh, before we, we put in city funds. Because there are a lot of, there are a lot of grants and funds that are available to us, to be able to either remodel or to upgrade or to put in new bus shelters.
Yeah, there, there are no general fund money being used for this. It's transportation funds and the ones you've identified. Those are the funds we're working with.
Okay, but I'd also like to include some of the grants from Foothill Transit.
Yes, that's what I said. Foothill Transit funds, transportation funds.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All righty, okay. All right, at this point, councilmembers, have any requests?
Yes, Mayor, I, um, I've been hearing from different residents regarding the mosquito issue. We're, we're having a lot of mosquitoes in our community this summer, and so would really like us to, you know, discuss, um, being part of the vector control district and what that would entail. If we can have that presentation and the conversation and a report back, that would be great. Um, also, you know, with the, the rains that we're expecting, uh, we are having constant flooding at Francis, Francisquito and Ramona Boulevard, and it's on the Irwindale side. But, you know, in anticipation of the, the rains that are expected this year, if we can, you know, try to work with the City of Irwindale, I'm not really sure what we can do to ask them if they can, you know, contribute to fixing the street, because I foresee that there would be, there will be problems. Um, if, with some, some of the minor rains that we've had, it's already been problematic. So, if we can also look into that. Also, graffiti task force, I know that we had established a task force years ago, and it was to bring city departments together for constant communication. And I'd like to ask that we definitely include the Caltrans, especially if there is an agreement with regard to the monument, and we're already having conversation with Caltrans. Let's get them out to quarterly meetings and, um, have them address, you know, what are they doing with regard to the graffiti removal along the ten freeway? And I know that it's a constant, uh, abatement and a constant challenge, but just really need to make sure that there's a strong partnership there, uh, along with the flood control. So, if we can get a representative from the flood control at those quarterly meetings or regular meetings, whatever you decide, Dan, is effective. And then finally, I know that we, we are getting the streetlights at, uh, Ohio and Baldwin Park Boulevard, as well as, uh, Los Angeles and La Rica. So, very excited about that. Definitely wanna say thank you. I know we've been working on that for several years, and sometimes that's what it takes. Um, and so with that, I also want us to take a look at a couple of other locations. We, you know, studied the areas and put in some four-way stop signs in the past, but let's look at them for streetlights, possibly, potential candidates. Los Angeles and Hornbrook, and Olive and Bleecker.
If I may, uh, for Los Angeles and Hornbrook, the council approved a consultant to do a traffic survey and to design the signal. So that's currently underway.
Great.
So we'll be bringing back, before the end of the year, a, a authorization to go to bid.
Fantastic.
For that. And so, uh, we, we'll also look at that other intersection, though. It hadn't been on my radar yet.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you.
And then, one moment, I just like, um, I had mentioned to, to Dan Wall, to Mr. Wall, um, that, um, I get a lot of calls from some of the residents that are over on Mangum Street, near the seven-eleven, and, uh, Mr. Wall agreed that they're going to do a traffic study. Um, there should be a signal there. It's a very, very busy street, and I think that, um, that, that would help, uh, in order for them to cross out of Mangum onto Besse or some of the other streets. So, thank you, Dan.
All right, thank you very much. Councilmembers wishing to...
I have one more comment. I just wanna add to what Monica said, and I agree with the, the vector control. We're the only city that doesn't belong to the vector control. But, you know, I work next door in Monrovia, and that's never been a problem. And lately, our kids look like they've been attacked by bees. And so I'm anticipating that they're headed this way, and so we're seeing it more and more. My, our kids are really bad, you know, in particular this week. And so, I know last time we had a presentation, there's an issue about, I believe, an increase in taxes. And so I would like to see a presentation, because we need to include the residents. Um, when they hear taxes or, you know, um, some kind of fee, it scares them. But, when you see the children and how badly they've been bitten, and what's happening in Monrovia, I just really wanna caution us that we need to move on it really fast, because it's headed this way, I believe. Thank you.
And I think, just real quick, I think vector's price was like eleven dollars per year, something in that vicinity, right? Split up, so...
And if I can also add, it would require the Prop two eighteen, so it would be voted upon by voters, as I, as I recall.
I thought it was not.
Yes. I, I recall that it would require Prop two eighteen, a vote by the residents.
I agree, too, and that's why I think it's important that we have a presentation with the residents, so they know what's happening.
Yeah, absolutely. But, for some odd reason, they, they, well, nevertheless, let's, let's, um, bring up a, a, an update on that.
We're scheduling them to come back at a future, in the very near future.
Sounds good. All right, thank you very much. Anyone else? If not, at this point, I will go ahead and move for a German of the city council meeting.
Second.
Yes. Oh, so, there's second, any objections? See none, so move. At this point, viva Baldwin Park. Now, we're gonna go ahead and open up the study session. So let's go and do the presentation. Gentlemen, come on up. Oh, that's right. All right, yes, and following this, uh, presentation, we'll be going back to closed session. Thank you, gentlemen. If you could introduce yourself and the company, appreciate that.
Hi, good evening, uh, council, mayor, council members and, and city staff. My name's Michael Chapin, uh, with Conner Energy, and, and here with me is, uh, Craig Fisher here from, uh, Program Manager for Con Edison. And, uh, again, thank you for, um, extending your evening, uh, with us tonight, so that we can make this presentation. Um, I'll, I'll go through it here, but essentially, um, Craig Fisher actually, again, he came out here from Florida, along with our, our team over the last few months, to help make this project possible here for the City of Baldwin Park. So again, thank you for extending this evening for us.
Michael, if I could just have a word for a minute, uh, just for city council staff and our audience. Uh, we have an energy committee. It's, uh, uh, Councilwoman, uh, Susan Rubio and myself sit on this committee, and we've looked at a number of proposals from different, uh, consulting companies, firms that have come forth and presented, uh, different options for different, you know, to save energy, uh, from, you know, gas and electric. And they came up with different proposals, and, and Con Edison came up with the, with one of the, the better proposals, and, uh, gave, gave a very thorough study that I think all of us will look at today. So I'm hoping, you know, your presentation and, and, uh, councilmembers, revealing all the information that you're gonna provide today and kind of, it's a lot of information, and I think the council needs to kind of spend a little time digesting it, understanding it, and hopefully with your presentation, you know, we'll, we'll do that, too. So, uh, I just wanna thank you for putting this together and getting to this point. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember.
Thank you.
Um, briefly, just wanna share with you, Conner Energy, um, we've been helping local governments, uh, in their energy districts, everything from helping establish, uh, energy programs like Property Assess Clean Energy, these PACE programs, uh, all throughout California. Um, we've helped with lighting projects and, uh, helping solar, uh, projects. And, uh, very briefly, about Con Edison, if you haven't heard, they're one of the largest nationwide,